Regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
As it.
City Councilmember Patterson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Here.
Mayor Protan Valentine?
Here.
And Mayor Vargas?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, um, tonight's invocation will be given by Councilwoman Angie Reyes English. And tonight's pledge of allegiance will be done by our city clerk, Carmen Avalos.
Okay, if you will please rise and face the flag in your offices and join me. Put your hand over your heart and please join me in the flexum. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman?
Uh, yes, I'm just gonna be brief. I just wanna thank the Lord for his continued blessing on the city, on its employees and the safety of our police officers. I thank the Lord for his blessing on those that have yet to receive him and more importantly, uh, helping the homeless and those that are less fortunate. I ask that he'll continue to work where we have fallen short and have continued to bless us and keep us under his, his, um, angels. Say this in your name, amen.
Amen. Okay, um, folks, so I just wanna bring to the attention to my councilmember colleagues, our staff and the residents that are out there in the community, that, um, although previously we have, uh, voted to, we were allowed not to read all of the resolutions and all of the ordinances. Um, per one of the directives from the governor and the state government, uh, we are required right now that we're doing things online, uh, to read all of the ordinances and resolutions into the record. So if that's just something that they're asking, it might be tedious, but, um, I'm pretty sure our city clerk Carmen Avalos will be efficient and run through those, okay?
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please read the guidelines for oral communications.
Thank you. Pursuant to Government Section 549, 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the city council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communications, a speaker shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the city council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any item not contained on the agenda. Furthermore, the governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the city manager for study, investigation, report and/or recommendations.
Okay, how many speakers do we have?
Uh, we have no speakers tonight, Mr. Mayor, and there was no written communication that was submitted to the city.
Okay, thank you. So we invite the community to always, uh, just realize that you guys have the opportunity to come and speak to us on different things pertaining to city business, uh, you know, and things that you see on the agenda and things that are concerned. I guess some people sometimes call, used to come and talk to us at the city council meetings and tell us how their vacation went and, uh, uh, I think some of my councilmember colleagues remember who that was, right? You guys know who, you know who that was, but, uh, we, uh, we need to stay focused and, you know, the requirements for oral communications are that, uh, it has to pertain to city business or concerns. So if there's no further speak, speakers, I'll declare oral communications closed, so ordered. Madam Clerk, can we start off with your consent calendar, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight I have items five, six, seven, ten and eleven, for a total of five items for your consideration. And I'll start off with item number five. So item number five is an approval of the city council minutes for the regular meeting minutes of March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, as well as a special meeting minutes of March thirtieth, April seventh, April thirteenth, April fifteenth and April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. Additionally, item number six is an approval of the waiver of full readings of resolutions and ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item seven is a city treasurer's request approval of the warrants. Item ten is a resolution, resolution number eighty-two eighty-six. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, establishing a twenty-four hour restricted parking on Saturday through Sunday on the south side of one hundred and sixteenth street from Gavalia Avenue to eighty-five feet west of Hawthorne Boulevard. Item number eleven is also a resolution, resolution number eighty-two ninety. It's a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, amending a code of ethics and conduct for appointed and elected officials. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my consent calendar for tonight. These five items are being recommended for adoption.
I make, well, I'll make the motion. Okay, I just made the motion. Anybody want a second? We can still have discussion.
I could, I could second that.
Okay, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman Reyes English.
I'd like to pull, I'd like to.
And Councilmember Montero, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to pull item number ten for discussion.
Okay, uh, can we, is everybody in agreement on voting for item eleven?
Uh, ma- uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I'm asking, is everybody, or do you have a question on either one, councilmember? Which one?
I don't have a question, but I have a, uh, a small correction on the minutes from.
Okay, yes, yes, go ahead, go ahead. That, we need to put that before we go forward.
Oh, I'm glad you mentioned that, because I had questions regarding that too.
All right, so.
It's, uh, the, uh, on, on the, uh, special meeting on Thursday, April nineteenth, page three oh five, that says that Council Montero asked that in twenty fifteen fifteen, no, it's supposed to be twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. Page three of the, of the, uh, Thursday, April nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one. So, so should be twenty fifteen sixteen, not twenty fifteen fifteen.
Not, we will correct that. Uh, thank you for noting that. I'm happy to make those amendments.
All right, thank you, and that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reyes English, uh, do you have a correction on any of the items?
No, I have a, I have a comment, though. Um, I feel, I feel that it's, um, you know, really unfair to have so many, uh, minutes that we have to remember, let alone go back on verbatim what it is that we said and didn't say. So I don't want to see, uh, a cluster of minutes that we have to approve. I think it needs to be the meetings at that moment, at that time.
Okay.
Versus putting multiple meetings and minutes such as this. So I don't want to see that again.
Yeah, I, I, I will support you. I think that's a valid concern and it's good that our city clerk hears that and their staff, so that maybe the, uh, minutes could be just follow at the following meeting as, as efficiently as possible. That's what you're asking.
Right, and then I'm gonna, okay, thank you. I'm gonna also speak on item number ten.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. City Attorney?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I can just ask for a point of clarification on the minutes, component of that, that being item number five. Councilmember Reyes English, I just wanna make sure that I understand your directive on that. You don't wanna see a set of minutes, uh, come before the city council. Do you want to see them just one at a time? My intent here was to.
Yes, they should be one at a time.
Okay.
We shouldn't, we shouldn't have to go back to March meeting minutes.
Uh, um, so just so that, so that I'm, that I'm understanding, I wanted to just assure the council that my intent in putting, uh, a set of minutes on the city council agenda tonight was to catch up the legislative record so that we're able to assist our auditors in making, um, uh, the requests that they've asked for in terms of approval of the legislative resolutions and adoptions of such matters. And so the intent is really to help our auditors be able to define what has transpired in the city. If we do one set of minutes at a time, it will definitely delay that process because they want to see what in fact has been adopted and the record of the city is the minutes. And so my intent is to really catch up with the minutes and provide as much as possible so that we have the legislative record be accurately reflected and be noted duly in the record so that we have that opportunity for auditors to have those, uh, set of minutes as part of their auditing process.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to, I'm gonna make a clarification, at least on my behalf. I don't know if Councilwoman Angie Reyes English is satisfied. Uh, she, she may be, but I just wanna clarify because I think the way you, uh, explained it, it, this might be, uh, not the spirit of what we're asking.
Okay, I just wanted to try and understand.
Well, we, uh, what I would like to see is that when a meeting's finished, like this meeting, at the following meeting that the minutes are completed so that we can vote on the minutes for this pre, for this meeting right now so that at, we just successively and, uh, we, we just start, you know, approving these minutes because like right here, I don't remember what I did, you know, and, and it's so if we have them one at a time as they, as you complete them, immediately following the meetings, then we'll be able to read, uh, find any errors that we need to clarify with you and approve. So that's, that, if you could just do that in, uh, on my behalf, that would be great.
All right. Mr. Mayor, we have received your directive and we will follow your.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and I'm gonna abstain from five. I'm not gonna vote on that.
Okay, look, uh, so in order, um, I'm going to ask just for correct a protocol. Mr. City Attorney, I want to pull back my motion. What is the correct, uh, um, directive? I wanna pull back my motion on items ten and eleven so that we can go back and vote on item five. What's the proper protocol?
Well, why don't we just go back and do it from the beginning and clarify it? So why don't you, um, move on the specific agenda items that you wanna move on right now?
Okay, so I'm going to retract my motion for item ten and eleven that was seconded by Councilmember Angie Reyes English. Uh, is everybody in agree, can, can everybody be in agreement on that so we can go back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So now, uh, like, I would like to make a motion based on the, uh, the abstentions given by Councilmember Montero or clarifications and the abstention from Councilmember Angie Reyes English is noted. I make a motion on that.
I second from five, six and seven.
Yes, from five, six and seven. The motion is for five, six and seven because it applies to five, six and seven. Uh, Miss City Clerk? Is, is that clear, Miss, uh, City Clerk? Yeah, we're good, right?
Yes, I have a motion by you, Mr. Mayor, with a second by Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
To approve item five, six and seven, correct?
Based on the modifications given. Okay.
Terrific. If I can just do a roll call on those three items?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Montero?
Aye.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
On item six and seven, I abstention, I'm standing on se, on five.
Okay, terrific.
That was noted.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Mayor Protan Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. We have, uh, four yeses and one abstention. Motion passes.
Okay, discussion on item ten.
Um, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna understand because I have looked over the report from, um, Mr. Allen, I believe, and, um, there's a petition of nine people, nine people requesting for this, um, restricted parking Saturdays, Sa- Saturday through Sunday from one sixteenth, uh, street from Bravilla to roughly eighty-five feet, uh, west of Hawthorne Boulevard. Why, why are we, um, using just nine individuals to make such a, a strong request? I say this because normally it's the property owners of the community that have to be more than sixty percent of homeowners that are signing petitions. We're looking at nine people. Not that, I'm not trying to say that this is neither, you know, here or there, but I wanna understand what's the percentage in a, in a petition that we're asking for from individuals to sign so that it could be, um, a, a, a very fair and clear, um, request, right? I, I, I want to make sure that we're not missing any of the community here. This is just nine individuals.
Councilwoman, uh, can, Councilwoman, can you hear?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and I just want, I wanna piggyback on what you just said. Uh, we remember, uh, we have been getting permit parking requests, restricted parking requests, and it just passes the buck over to the neighboring streets. Then we're gonna get those people asking for something else, and there's those people. At some point, I believe we have to hold the line. Uh, maybe, uh, Mr. Leon can, uh, tell us what's the, uh, what the origin of this thing is, what's being asked, maybe we don't understand, but if it goes back to those problems that we had, I, I, I'm leaning on not approving something like this, but go ahead, Ellen.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protan and City Council. Um, the, the reason, uh, for this no parking, uh, for Sa- Saturday and Su- Sunday, uh, this is at the request of the residents on one sixteen streets. Um, the, the area for the no parking is actually signed at one hundred percent, uh, by the property owner out there. There's only in front of two property, uh, out on the south side of one sixteen street. Uh, they have signed the petition. In addition, uh, the residents on the north side of the street has also signed the petition. Um, the, the reason for this is this is a request by the residents, uh, to prevent, concerned vehicle, uh, parking on the south side of the street, um, conducting activity that has raised a concern to the, uh, either the residents out there or the property owner on the south side of the street. So everyone agree on the proposed, uh, parking restriction out there. So we, we do have a hundred percent compliance out there signing, uh, for this parking prohibitions.
Uh, Ellen, okay. No, thank you for mentioning that, but we established a moratorium on these, on these, uh, on these exclusionary type of, uh, uh, permit parking and these types of restrictions. So, uh, that hasn't gone away. We haven't talked about removing that. I think we're, at least a couple of my colleagues, I believe, are more prone to say, hey, you know, we can't just approve stuff that comes just out of residents' request. We have to hold the line somewhere and unfortunately, this might be an opportunity. Councilwoman Angie, uh, I have a question for you. Does it, remember, remember when we had this problem?
Yeah, we, we, we've had problems, um, regarding parking for years. We all know this. We asked for a feasibility study to be made and I, I believe that Vaughn's leadership is helping in those efforts to, to address our parking situation here in Hawthorne. We talked about waiving fees for striping, um, you know, parking on streets. Um, people are using vehicles to, to occupy a, a number of, of spaces, saving for family and, and other people. It's just really unfair. Um, we've had preferential parking requests where residents have, have petitioned the city to make their street a preferential parking which permits them only exclusive for those streets and communities and they have to have a pass that, that says that they belong in that community and if they have visitors, they have to pay for those visitor passes. Um, there's been a number of, of concerns regarding parking. I don't have a concern with, with individuals, constituents, um, you know, reaching out to the city council or the city requesting assistance for, for parking. But these types of requests where you're asking for, uh, a Saturday and a Sunday, mind you, a Saturday and a Sunday, that brings concern to me. And not only that, you have a petition of nine people. That's not the entire community. These are just individuals that I think are just piggyback off in one individual that might have an issue with it. And so that's, that's where my concern is at. I wanna ultimately pull this item and I want a more thorough investigation as to, um, the reasonings behind a Saturday and Sunday. Because once we start this, you're gonna have others requesting Saturday and Sunday no parking either. And we already have a city that is desperate for, for parking and there's exempt streets that are exempt on Saturdays and Sundays. I don't wanna revert to take away Saturday and Sunday. So that's my concern.
I, I'm gonna pass it on to Councilwoman Montero right now, but the last comment, I'm gonna, just in response to what you said, there is no justification as to why they're requesting it. There is nothing in there. It's just the request. And when these requests take place, there's usually one person that comes up with the idea and goes around, gets the signatures. So it doesn't only impact those people that live that right there. It does impact people that are in adjacent areas that use those areas for parking. So, um, and also it's, is it people, it's usually people's fault for having like six cars to like, uh, a four-person family. That's what's happening. So I don't even wanna table it, Councilwoman English. I'm willing to vote on it and, uh, deny it. So I'd, I'd be more willing to do that than just.
To the chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I, I want maybe, uh, Alan to explain a little bit more because what I heard is, is that this request is because of healthy and safety issue. I know he probably didn't wanna say what it is, uh, but it's about safety and health issue. And then if these nine residents are the, uh, are the homeowners there and plus the business, if it made one hundred percent on that strip of eighty-five feet, maybe there is a reason why they asking, uh, to not permit parking on Saturday and Sunday. I think it's about healthy and safety issue, right? Correct, Alan?
That is correct, yes, and this is, uh, not preferential parking. This is just not parking uh, for anyone for Saturday and Sunday and, and, uh, Councilmember Alex Montero is correct. Uh, this is a safety issue that was brought up by the residents.
Yeah.
And, um, a petition was signed by all the property owner that is fronting, uh, the area that we are proposing for the no parking. So we, we have one hundred percent compliance out there.
To the chair, okay, okay. Once again, I understand this is not permanent, preferential parking. I didn't say it was, okay? I'm talking about history in the past, in the requests that we have seen before the council. I'm talking a history. So when you're asking for a closure on a Saturday and Sunday and now you're saying this is, has to do with the public health issue, safety concern, there's nothing noted here that says that or speaks to that.
There's no specific.
And if there's something that needs to be a legal confidential or needs to be a closed session to discuss this so-called safety issue, public safety issue, why wasn't the council briefed on that?
So I would motion, I would support the motion by Miss, uh, English to table this and then maybe Alan and, uh, Robert, you guys can give us a more detail, uh, why you recommended this to be approved.
Uh, Councilmember English didn't make a motion.
No, uh, she says she wants the table.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you still want a table or?
I, 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 I want to understand why. I wanna understand why. So I, I will, I want it pulled. I'll ask for a second.
That's fine.
I second.
I need us, I, I need you to work with the council as to understanding what's going on here. And then, and then if the item comes back, I'll support what the mayor wants to do at that point.
But, uh, but I understand what you're saying and I think, uh, we wanna find out, look, look, Alan. Okay, I, I can't be taking word of mouth requests like this and you know, you're the only one that knows why they're asking and you don't wanna tell us or you can't tell us. Why can't you tell us? This is not a complete request. There's nine people that are going to impact residents that live around that might park there. Why are these nine residents going to dictate what's the availability of parking for a whole area? Um, I, and not even give a justification. I mean, that's, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna say, but I, I'm not kinda, I'm kinda disappointed that this was not well put together and can you tell us what that hazard is right now?
Uh, sure. Um, this is, uh, based on activity that from the resident telling us that they're doing drugs. Uh, their activities where they pick up, um, um, people on Imperial and.
You need to talk straight, Alan, or else we're not gonna. What the hell, what the heck are you all shy about?
Prostitutes.
Prostitutes, yeah.
Yeah, that's it, there you go.
Picking up prostitute and doing the business on one sixteen street on the south side because one sixteen street is, uh, has a lot of trees, a lot of shade, um, so and it's kind of out of the eyesight of people and that's the reason why they, they picked that spot to do that activity there.
Okay, so.
On weekend, there's, um, not much parking demand on the south side because the businesses are closed. Uh, so they, they use that spot for that type of activity and, and.
But there is overflow traffic. I live in that general area that uses that. Go ahead.
To the chair, thank you, Mayor. Um, Vaughn, can, can I instruct you to please work with the chief of police? Can we make the area a little bit more visible? Can we cut back some shrubberies, some overgrown vegetation, cutbacks on trees? Can we make some more lighting available in the area? Can we strike, can we strike curbs that are either red curb, uh, maybe, uh, at a, at a, at a, at an ADA compliant off the curb of, of the sidewalk, a pedestrian crossing way? Can we make, um, efforts to just help this corner, this area to address the concerns of, uh, it not being, uh, blighted in a way to where it's, um, inviting prostitution, where it's inviting drug, uh, sales, where it's inviting, uh, unsolicited, uh, you know, items of any sorts? So let's work together with the police. Let's work with public works. Let's make the area a little bit more friendly, safer for the community, um, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, and then, I think that's a more immediate, uh, that immediately impacts the same, so guess what? They don't do it there. They're gonna do it on the other, they do it on the other street. They do it, I hate to say, maybe possibly in front of some of our locations. It's just, you, you know, you're passing on the buck to other streets?
To the chair.
So go ahead, go ahead. What's your feedback?
I'm, I'm just curious, could you, uh, be clear about what is meant when you say twenty-four hour restricted parking?
Um, twenty-four hour from morning to overnight, uh, no hours of the day will be allowed for on-street parking.
Yeah. So no parking at all during?
Saturday and Sunday. On, on the south side only, from Bravilla to seventy-five feet west of Hawthorne Boulevard.
So let me, so just throwing this out there, being, playing devil's advocate, let's say that the issue is, uh, people, prostitution being, being. Prostitution being being, you know, being done on on that street or or people picking up prostitutes and parking on that street. I I assume they're not gonna be there long. So if it were, I mean, you know, let's say that uh somebody decides to say screw the no parking thing, park there.
There we go, yeah, I got you.
When would they get in trouble, like, would wouldn't, would a police officer have to come out and respond and say, you're parking somewhere? You're not supposed to be parking, or would it be parking enforcement that would be coming out there to say, hey, your parking is where you're not supposed to be parking?
Uh so so anyone from the police department that can enforce the parking restriction. Has the right to go there to to cite the vehicle. Um to move them along away from that area.
I I I I I hear what Councilmember Patterson is saying, this request is not going to eliminate the prostitution and the drugs. It's not, because you know, how, at what point are we gonna, they're gonna call, they're gonna be gone by the time the cops get there.
The mayor, it is possible for us to put camera on that intersection?
I do like the idea of cameras, free sliding, conduct vegetation, potential camera.
Yeah, let's explore on that.
Uh and we can move on after this, I think that's good feedback, but Vaughn uh close it out, please.
Yes, please, uh so what I recommend is pulling this item for further discussion and study. Uh and we'll bring this back with additional research on ways to uh stop the the tone of items that have been going on there. I I will work with the chief of police to maybe to have a temporary camera there and I'll work with Public Works to see what other options we have uh. Besides eliminating parking in that area.
Thank you very much, item number eleven, please.
Uh we there we there was a motion and a second to pull the item.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Montero? Councilmember Patterson? Councilmember Reyes English? Mayor Proton Valentine? And Mayor Vargas? Thank you.
Now, thank you guys, item number eleven, please, can you read it to the record?
Yes, item number eleven is a resolution, the resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. Amending the Code of Ethics and Conduct for Appointed and Elected Officials, recommended motion is to adopt.
I make a motion? Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, moved by myself, seconded by uh Councilmember Montero, go ahead.
Um city attorney?
Yes.
So there was some questions with regards to how this would be managed with HR, do you have, can you give us some um. A review of what ha- what would happen at the HR level with regards to employees?
Um this is for elected officials and commissioners and it's not necessarily. For the employees or staff, um the the original resolution. If you recall, this is after the uh the public presentation of outside council regarding. Uh campaign donations to an elected official who later appoints someone for a staff or appointed position. And during that presentation, um it was learned that the um the only thing that the the city can regulate. Because of constitutional rights of anybody making political donations. Um that the only thing that we can regulate and restrict is a someone running campaign. Soliciting donations directly from staff members. So that's what we amended the Code of Ethics for elected officials and appointed commissioners and whatnot. Not for staff, the staff, um we wouldn't be able to apply that to the staff because of, if you recall, the presentation. Uh if an employee or employee group wanted to make a campaign donation in an election, that's the first amendment right to do so. So that can't be regulated, so what can be regular, only thing that if you recall from the presentation. Only thing that can be regulated is soliciting directly from employees from someone running for a campaign.
Okay, it was also my understanding that there was a resolution that was uh to read similar to what's on the books um. With the state, I think it was the state or the FPCC. There was, there was language and I believe it was uh Councilmember Patterson that brought the language. And I had asked that it be it be duplicated. With a resolution from from us and then it was my understanding because of um. The perception and there had to do do with uh you know, during the bargaining or something like this, that employees would be. Um notified, I understand the First Amendment rights, I understand that they could have. Uh a pre- uh you know, a preference to do whatever they want to do and that's not the issue here, the issue is providing information. To the employee so that they're well aware of a resolution that we passed. And that they have in their groups that they're aware and if I remember correctly, prior to Pristine uh leaving. There was gonna be some implementation in her department under HR. That gives employees a signature that they understood the resolution. Uh and the language that read the perception, uh per- the perception of the donation could look um in conflict.
Um I wasn't aware of that direction or what was being done at the HR department. What what I have, um what I, this is a direction from you, Councilmember Reyes English, um. Was a direction given after the public presentation by the outside council. Um about what we should do and this is the direction that I reviewed that. Uh council meeting a couple of times to make sure that that was what you were directing us to do. So in terms of the HR and what was going on there, I'm not aware of what was being um attempted to be done by the former HR director.
Okay, well, we could always bring this back and make it an amendment, but thank you.
Yeah, no, we can vote on this and then just make amendments later.
That's fine, Mayor, thank you.
Roll call vote, please. Roll call vote, uh Ms. City Clerk?
Thank you, Councilmember Montero.
I.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes?
Yes.
Uh Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Okay, thank you guys, uh thank you very much, um item number fourteen, are we ready for item fourteen? Can you read that uh ordinance, second reading into the record? Uh yes, you you can unmute yourself, ma'am.
Sorry, thank you for that, item number fourteen is an ordinance, ordinance number twenty-two, twenty-three, it's a second reading. It's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California. Adopting a notice of exemption in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as CEQA. And recommending approval of zoning text amendment, application number two oh two one Z eight oh one. To amend title seventeen of the Hawthorne Municipal Code, section three point three, which is development standards. Contained in appendix B, design guide for highest density residential and mixed-use development. In accordance with state law and making findings in support thereof, this item is presented for adoption.
I have a discussion on this.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, you too.
Okay, uh Mister. Okay, uh planning staff, who do we have on 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 hand for the from planning?
Yes.
Or or uh. Mister City Manager, who are you gonna direct to explain this to us?
Interim City uh, excuse me, interim city planning director, Mr. Art.
Okay, Mister Art, go ahead.
Uh good evening, uh council members, yes, this is on text amendment, um essentially. Amends a section of the code that discusses development standards. And within those standards, there's a line that says, in no case shall a single building occur in more than one zone. Simultaneously by being located across a zone boundary line, this amendment would strike out that language. And in addition, it would add a a new language that would say, if a building occurs in more than one zone. Simultaneously by being located across a zone boundary line, the more restrictive zoning standards shall apply to the entire building.
Okay, uh I think that sounds pretty good. Uh I'll make a motion. No, no, and and I just want to note that this is a second reading, this was uh uh brought into the, it was moved, introduced. So this is second reading, go ahead, ma'am, go ahead.
Yeah, so.
Sorry about that.
That and 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 because I was not here for the first reading, I want to understand how this came about, so. Um I'm reading a little bit here, uh art, um. What happened in July thirteenth, twenty twelve?
You're reading from the discussion that.
Agenda bill.
Yeah, the city adopted a um standards in July of thirteen, twenty twelve. But this, really the beginning of this starts with a project that was approved by the city in two thousand sixteen. Um so that's really where it starts from, but that's the two thousand twelve date is just simply a a date of record that says that's when this ordinance was adopted.
The ordinance that we're now striking language from?
Yes.
And you're saying that the language that we're striking is speaking to, we cannot cross zones?
Yes, the language currently says that a a a building, a single building cannot be located. In uh more than uh one zone, so it can't cross a zone boundary line.
So what is a zone boundary line, explain that to me?
It's rare, but you could have a large property that might have two different zones on it, so. If a a building being constructed on a property with two different zones, there could be a situation where that building. Would straddle both zones and this provision currently says you can't do that, you can't have a building that. Straddles, you have to have the buildings ba- basically separated, if you will.
So the. July thirteenth, twenty twelve language said that it could, correct?
The twenty, it says no, that it cannot, that a building cannot be located on.
Twenty twelve?
Yes.
Okay, and in twenty sixteen, you did what?
No, what I, in twenty sixteen, there was a project that was approved by uh by the city, by the planning commission. And what prompted this zone text amendment is associated with a project that uh was approved. In that case, the project was approved with the building crossing a a zone boundary line. And this zontic text amendment would uh address that matter and which would allow. That project that was approved not to be out of compliance with zoning.
So this is a mixed-use project?
Yes.
Okay, and they changed the, they they changed the uh, it says one hundred units, they changed it, you said, right?
Uh so I could, um let me just give the information, so this two thousand sixteen approval was for a hundred unit mixed-use project. Um it was a density bonus agreement involved with it and a track map for a condominium. And in August nineteenth of twenty twenty, the applicant um modified the project. And changed it from a for-sale project to a rental and in that process. They needed to amend their destiny bonus agreement because previously it was designed for a for-sale product on condominium. Now it's a rental product, the density bonus agreement must be changed. And that was a a change and the planning commission approved the density bonus modification, but later the the parcel map. To allow for this project to move forward, one of the commissioners noted that the uh the building. Crossed two different zones and that brought matter to everybody's attention. Which then forced us to look into this matter to see how we could resolve it and the solution was to. Modify the code because this provision that prohibits a building from crossing a zone boundary. There's no indication that it would be detrimental if a building did cross, that happens uh rarely, but ninety percent of the time. Zones are so different that you can't have a building and cross it, but in this case, the two zones were very similar. And um it made sense for us to modify this provision. With that safeguard, that the more restrictive zone would apply, that way it it assures that. Neighboring properties will not be impacted by a more restrictive zoning designation. And that's where it comes from and so this is a way to fix this problem that that occurred four years ago.
And the um developer, the owner of this, what was there, what what were they, where are they at at this point, are they? Are they fine with what occurred through the planning commission and making the changes?
So they are fine with this proposal because once this is uh adopted and becomes code, then they could proceed with their project.
Okay.
And uh and it avoids bait and switch. Bait and switch, sometimes they'll say, hey, and then they'll they'll make it larger and then they'll just try to have the less restrictive zoning. Uh Councilmember Montero and then Mayor Proton Valentine, go ahead.
Uh actually, Mister Mayor, Art Art have answered my question, so I I move to Ms. Valentine.
Okay, thank you, oh Councilma- uh Mayor Proton Valentine and then I leave.
Yeah, I was about to say the same thing, he answered my question.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I I heard everything accurately, um to project, if a project covers two two zones. The more restrictive zone applies, otherwise the developer would need to just create two different projects, is that correct?
That's correct, they would need to do or do some other amendments, zone text amendment, zone map amendments and what have you, that would have to come before the city council ultimately.
Got it, they don't want to take the more restrictive uh zone, they can apply for a change of some sort.
Ms. City Clerk, did did we have, do we have a motion and a second, Ms. City Clerk, or do we need to make that?
No, you you need to make a motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Reyes English?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes unanimously, five to zero.
Item number sixteen into the record, please.
Thank you, item number sixteen uh is um. An overview of the American Rescue Plan Act funding, uh it is recommended that sta- staff recommends that the city council provide direction. Uh to the city manager on priorities to solicit back from the public and refine cost. The presentation on the American Rescue Plan Act funding will be uh given by Finance Director, Ms. Felice Lopez.
Okay, so this is solely a presentation, no action to be taken, right?
Right, I think there's action as far as direction goes.
No, I don't think so.
Direction, they need direction.
No, but there's a. Okay, go ahead.
Once, once we give the presentation, we'd like to have your input on on how to move forward.
Okay, I didn't see anything specifically on my record here, okay, go ahead.
Good evening, council, let me just share my screen here.
Nice office you have there.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Oh, wow.
Very classy.
Looks like a New York view.
Go ahead, miss.
Okay, so here we go. All right, can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
All right, the American Rescue Plan Funding, um uh based on the US Department of Treasury report. The City of Hawthorne is to receive thirty point five million dollars. Uh the distribution of funds will be um in this, by the end of this uh month, we will receive half. Of the allocation, fifteen point two million, uh funds, um the deadline for spending these funds is. December of twenty twenty-six, oops, sorry. And this is, there we go. All right, so the eligible uses for um the ARPA funds, uh and this is a non-exclusive list, it's just. A summary of um some of the options that that can, uh the funds can be used for. So it could be used for COVID nineteen response and prevention, testing and treatment uh of long-term symptoms. Improvement of ventilation systems in public facilities, mental health treatment and other behavioral health services. Assistance to unemployed workers and small businesses, assistance to nonprofit organizations. Assistance to households, aid to impacted industries, including including tourism, travel, hospitality. Uh and other impacted industries, aid to disproportionately impacted populations and communities. And um additional uses would be to provide premium pay for eligible workers. Uh which could be emergency, any uh workers that are considered emergency workers. Uh pr- uh providing government services, which includes the replacement of lo- of local government revenue. Uh lost during COVID nine, during the COVID nineteen crisis. Uh this is calculated by the formula provided by the Department of Treasury. Uh and the City of Hawthorne experienced a shortfall of about seventeen point two million for the period ended December twenty twenty. Um also to make necessary investments in infrastructure, cities may use funds. Uh for clean water and drinking water, safe uh state revolving funds and broadband in areas that are. Um unserved or underserved.
Uh Felice?
Yes.
Are these examples of what could be or or this?
These are just examples, right, there there, there's, it's just a a a broad criteria. Uh and if there are other areas that that council uh would like us. Uh to explore, we can also do that, these are just kind of suggestions. Um of of what is the possible for the funds to be spent.
Also, Felice, I know you're gonna read some more stuff, but you know, because I was thinking about this along with some, maybe possibly some of my colleagues. Do you have the exact wording from the federal government that? from the federal government that talks about the general uses so that maybe we can pulse you, uh basically ask you or investigate? Because if we're looking at this, I don't want us to go away saying, oh, these are the only things we could use it. There could be other things that we could think about as a group.
Right, we can provide you uh a detailed list, but again, sometimes um the list may not con- contain everything. Other cities might have come up with other creative ways um to spend the funds, so it's just that we can provide you a a more detailed list.
But whatever the government gives us to that says, whatever their official wording, because that's what we go by and then then we can be creative off of that too.
Yes.
Good, but if you can get get us that uh by the end of the week, that would be good.
And if I can step in really quick, Felice, we have a subject matter expert on the line that's gonna answer questions after the presentation. His name is uh Barry Foster from HDM, so he's assisting other cities. So we can ask him direct questions on wording and funding uh reimbursements after Felice's presentation.
Okay, uh cool, I'll let her finish, but he's heard what my, what what I'm interested in getting.
Yes.
So that we could have an educated conversation with him. Go ahead.
Absolutely. All right, so the ideas, and these are just some of the ideas um that staff um as a group has come um come up with, um small business emergency relief grants for local businesses and nonprofits. They have to meet a minimum criteria, uh and this would not be uh required to be repaid. Um assistance to local restaurants to enhance outdoor dining facilities. Um there's a program for matching funds for community gift cards. Um if they purchase this card, they would receive another, another uh bonus fifty dollar card or whatever amount the the city decides uh would be appropriate. Um food assistance, affordable housing and homelessness support, sewer system upgrades and retrofits uh and upgrades of city-owned properties. We currently have six properties that um need quite a bit of of um repair. Um so that would be um something that that the city would not have to use um general fund monies for if 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 the funds uh for the ARPA um funding were used. Um and those are, those are the suggestions from staff, and if you have questions, um we have Barry Foster. Let me just unshare my screen here. Um and Barry can answer some of the questions on the um approved funding um and um the possibilities of of projects that that might be able to be implemented.
Mister Foster, welcome.
Hello, I'm glad to be here tonight.
Go ahead, give us uh, give us your take on all this, please.
Yeah, so um, so I work with HDL and so I manage our economic development division. And I've worked uh with about a hundred and thirty local governments over the last seven and a half years, most of those cities. Um and then previously, previously, before that, I worked for twenty-three and a half years for four different cities. So um I kind of understand the private side and the public side. Um we're currently working with um with ten cities with um helping them uh with assistance with the American Rescue Plan Act. And um so um y- y- your your comment earlier about um anything you do with the federal government, uh it it gets a little cumbersome and the the rule is actually their interim final, they call them interim final uh rules, so they, they're still doing some tweaking with the federal government. Um and they're, you know, the the, only the federal government will come up with interim final rules. And so they've, for the last couple of months, they've been tweaking them a little bit, but we don't anticipate any major changes there. But um we're still tracking those and during the last probably four months, my staff's been on all kinds of webinars and tried to become experts at 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 these. But um they are being tweaked a little bit and changing a little bit. In terms of what you can use them for, um they they do have these broad categories. They don't have everything there. If you can make the argument that it somehow um helps with the pandemic, with dealing with COVID nineteen and dealing with um the impact and loss because of that. Um uh making that argument that um you can, you can do that. Um we can look at at whether we can qualify that that or not. So there there is no exhaustive list, if they have these broad broad categories. And so um some of the things that that Felice, and so the the interim final rules are a hundred and fifty-one pages. And so um they get a little bit, you know, complex in terms of what um what they're doing.
Document, send me the document. I want to look and then we're gonna come back and say, okay, I I I give up.
And we're, and we're happy to send that to you, but um and so, but um the the listing that um that Felice has, um it's it's kind of a starting place to to um introduce us to the, to the city council. Um the the really, the first step that cities have to take is it is determine what their, what their revenue loss has been. So we've done that, um we worked with Felice and her staff and and we've critiqued what she's came up with and tweaked a little bit. But um so it it it's, it was done in in conformance with what ARPA requirements um want you to do. So you're you're allowed to look at um at your loss from from the, from the general fund. And so um you calculate the three years before the pandemic, those three fiscal years. And you're, you know, what you're doing is you're looking at your revenue for those three years and you're kind of with with an average growth rate. So the ARPA allows you to use either four point one or whatever your, whatever your city's average growth rate is. And so in the case of Hawthorne, it's eight point four two, so you get to use that higher growth rate. So when you, when you, when you then go look at at what your, what your revenue was for um for twenty twenty, so you're looking at what your last, your last fiscal year was before the pandemic. You're allowed a growth that that eight point four two percent growth rate. So that's your, they call it your counterfactual revenue. So that's, that's what you would be at if there was no pandemic, if there was no COVID out there. And then, and then you look at what actually occurred during, so you're looking at your actionable revenues for fiscal year twenty twenty. And so that that loss, that seventeen point almost three million dollars, that 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 was your general fund loss for that period for twenty twenty. And so you're, you're, you are eligible under ARPA guidelines and rules to um to take that money out of the ARPA funds and put that back into your general fund. So the the beauty of that is that you can then use that for any general government services. And so you're not restricted to any kind of ARPA requirements and and you'll have to meet some of those tests in terms of them being qualified or not. You're allowed to do that for any general government services that Hawthorne does. And so um but then so we've been able to figure out what tw- what the loss is for twenty twenty. We've put together just, just guesstimates for the next three um years for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two and twenty-three and and looking at those, at those years. And so, but those will have to be refined when actuals come in. You're allowed to have that annual growth rate and look to see. I personally and some of our, the folks at our company, and so we we do sales tax work for probably four hundred cities in California, including Hawthorne. And so um we think the recovery is going to be a little bit more robust and quicker than what somebody, some folks might think it's gonna be. And so, you know, we're hoping that we're in the right direction. We're heading out of this pandemic and that revenues will ke- will continue to increase as recovery happens. So those are just guesstimates on what they can be for those other three years. Um some of the things that um the Felice talked about in terms of of possibilities that you could use um ARPA funds for. Um so the council really has a decision on whether you you want to um fully take advantage of that of that seventeen point three million dollars and reimburse the general fund. Whether you want to do part of it, you know, if you want to defer a part of it, that really is your decision. That's the, that's the, a decision that the council can take. And again, um as as Felice talked about, you have until the end of twenty twenty-six to spend these monies. You don't need to, you don't need to spend them all at once either. And so um you have the ability to to kind of pick and choose and do those things. The the list that um that Felice talked about, um these are some of the things that we've looked at in terms of opportunities to do some things um in Hawthorne that you've had needs for, that can be qualified under the ARPA requirements. So one is the small business um emergency relief grants. Almost all businesses have been impacted by the, by the pandemic and COVID. You can look at sales tax revenue and 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 see that a lot of them are down. But that's just one indicator, so that they've, they've had to lay off employees, they've had adjustments in in uh having to do business. All those kinds of things that that hopefully we're kind of heading in the right direction now. But um um grants, I think, could be, could be a part of what you look at in helping that business community. They're all looking at that light at the end of the tunnel, trying to get to that point where they can get back to a little bit more um normal times. Another thing that we've seen that's popular out there um is to, is to help your, your restaurants with their outdoor dining opportunities. Everybody kind of jumped in and had to do these things on an interim or temporary basis during the past fifteen, sixteen months. But as as we get back to a little bit more of normal, I think um customers and and folks that are using restaurants are gonna want to see some more permanent amenities, some some nicer amenities rather than than tents and other temporary kinds of things. Uh last year, they've gone to the parklets, they're just, they're, they're, they're temporary. And so looking at what you can do to to help with those improvements, ARPA funds can can be used for that. And that's obviously gonna help your restaurants and and ultimately help with your sales tax revenue. Another, another opportunity that seems to be gaining a lot of steam in California with cities is doing gift card programs. And I've talked to to a number of councils and and uh I think they like this idea. So it 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 allows you to to have a resident, you can pick whatever um amount you want to have for the gift cards, whether it's fifty or a hundred or whatever else. Um the residents have to, have to buy a gift card, so they're making it somewhat of investment in that. But then they're getting a a free one, they're getting a matching one. Uh you're using ARPA funds for that. And then it's helping, it's helping, it can only be spent in 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 the community and with your businesses. And so it it has that ripple effect. And so it um it it really, I think, it helps your residents. Um but it's up, it's helping your business community. And so um there's a, there's a company out there called um UFD, they're a national company, but they've been very active in California. And so they, they manage this program. They take a, they take a fee for that, kind of like what American Express does when you use in a when you use a credit card. Um but that's, that's been pretty popular too. That might be something that that the city council wants to look at and consider. And I think there's, um I think there's lots of opportunity in Hawthorne to to look at 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 programs that can really help the community through food assistance programs, um helping with affordable housing. Um and and looking at maybe some of the the affordable housing stock that you have, helping with improvements there. And then maybe looking at at some new opportunities, um and then homeless uh support. Um I think those are all, all those areas have certainly been impacted during the pandemic. And so I think there's ways that you can, you can look to maybe use some of the ARPA funds for those categories too. And then um in terms of infrastructure, it, ARPA really, it's it's restricted to um either water, water or sanitary sewer um or stormwater. Um and and so it's, it's a little bit um focused on those things. If, when you, when you take your money from your general fund revenue loss, you're putting it back in your general fund, that allows you to then to go out and maybe do some work that's not under ARPA, uh street improvements, other kind of more typical infrastructure improvements. Um and then the the last thing that is on the list, um and Felice talked about it, um there's a number of city-owned um facilities that could use improvements to really help them um in terms of becoming more um compliant with COVID and making things safer for people to go back into, in a city, in the city facilities, whether it's filtration systems, you know, air for, air filtration systems, those kinds of things that um um I think that you could use to help with those improvements. Um just making people feel safe about going back in those, in those um, in those public facilities. And so um that's kind of the list, but again, we're happy to give you the the full a hundred and fifty-one pages of the interim final rules. And and you can certainly go through them, but but these are the ones that we thought, um and and also in talking to you, your city manager and Felice and and some of the suggestions that came from um some of the department heads too, that we thought was a good place to start with. And so a- again, you've got a pretty significant um general fund revenue loss. And so um I think that is to, is to get council direction on whether um you want to push that um wholly into the general fund. Um but then look at some of these other opportunities um to maybe make some um some strategic investments in the community to help your business community kind of moving forward um, kind of short term and then long term.
Okay, um I'm gonna ask a quick question and I'm gonna go to um council member colleagues. So um my understanding is that there's two parts. There's one iteration that's at at some point and then another iteration, uh like half is given up at some point and then half.
So so, so you'll get your first half now here towards the end of the month?
Okay.
And then you'll get your next half about a year later.
So
And so you have both those allocations. Um doesn't mean that you need to spend them right away. Again, you have until, you have until the end of uh December thirty first, twenty twenty-four to allocate money. So as you get down the road, maybe a year or two and you see another opportunity, um you can, you can make adjustments on your allocations. And then you have until the end of twenty twenty-six to actually spend the money. And then whatever you don't spend, you have to send it back to the feds. I'm not anticipating that a- any of my clients wants anything back.
So uh so every, so when we spend, so when we get the first half, which would probably be sixteen million or seventeen or whatever that is.
Fifteen.
Fifteen? Would it be, um sir, uh Barry? So is that, is that a, does all of, we have to decide to put all of that first amount or all of the second amount fully into the general fund? Or can it be diversified allocations for both halves?
You you can, you can look at taking it, um putting it all into the general fund now. Um or you can do part of it and you could defer part of that general fund loss to to next year if you wanted to. If you, if there's, there's some of those things on that list that that um pique the interest of the city council and they want to pursue now. And so you, and so that's kind of, we're advocating that is kind of a blended approach, so that that really is at the discretion of the city council. Um you still have some time. You don't need to, you don't need to do everything now. You can, you can push some things back a little bit too if you want.
So it's what I called it, diversified allocations, right?
It's diversified, we call it blended, but it, it, it's the same thing.
What do they say, potatoes, potatoes? Ma- Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, council member Montero, and then council member Patterson. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, thank you. So um I noted when uh when Arnie Shadbear was here, he gave us a hazard mitigation plan. And in that hazard mitigation plan, I believe there were sewer system upgrades that needed to be made. Sewer system uh upgrades and retrofits. It seems to fit perfectly in the, within the parameters of what we can spend the COVID funds for. So um I'd like to direct this to Alan. Am I correct, Alan, that we needed two million dollars from that for the, for the sewer system or 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 is it more than that?
Uh that is correct. Um we will need more than two million, but I think two million will be a good start.
Okay, so I'd like to say um, the first thing, thank you, Alan. The first thing I'd like to say is I'd like to see some of that money put toward the s- the um sewer system upgrades because that's money we're going to have to spend from the general fund anyway. And if we can spend it from the COVID funds, that would be so much more helpful to us. The second thing is um I want to be able to help the small businesses with emergency relief grants. Um but I don't know what they need. So I think we need to have a a way of having, I I think that was something that was recommended. We need to way, need the way of having hearings to find out from them, the small businesses, the restaurants, what it is they need, how much of that money would be needed for them so that we could have an intelligent way of making decisions about how to give out the relief grants. And then I would like to see the rest of that money put into um the reimbursement to the city for COVID losses. I'd like to see as much as possible put into the city coffers for 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 uh relief for losses because I understand that we will have many expenditures that will be coming up that we'll need to spend this money for. And if we can have a reimbursement into our funds for uh for losses we've experienced, I think that would be such a boost to us and we would have, would not be, not have to uh use uh um general funds for, for things that we have, that we need, that we know we'll have to spend money for. So those are my thoughts.
Council member Montero?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um thank you, Felice and Mr. Barry. Um I do agree that uh we probably do need to Um I do agree that uh we probably do need to get that seventeen million to our general fund. But maybe do it in two ways, you know, like the first payment, you know, pay half. And then the other half to spend on the programs. Um I would suggest that, you know, the number one priority that I think that we should try to do is fix the upgrade the city-owned properties because uh as you recall, about six months ago, we got a report from Kimberly Mack that uh we need a lot of money from and that money was going to come from the general fund to fix uh and upgrade those uh city-owned buildings. And so I think that would be number one priority because uh those people that live in those buildings are low-income families and seniors. And we need to provide them with a better and improved living condition. So that, I think, is number one priority. The second one in my list, I would I would put to the small business uh grants. But like Ms. Valentine said, maybe we need to do a town hall meeting uh so we can listen to the business. Uh what do they need? And then we can figure out how much money we'll put in there. My third one, I would say I would go for food assistance and homeless. Okay, uh I'm not too favorite about these gift cards. Uh because I would put more money to give food, you know, to give food distribution, like food drives, give we can buy food and give people food and and helping the homeless. Um and um and I believe that, you know, we 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 could talk about the litigation uh plan. Uh but I think we do have a deadline uh of fixing sewage. Uh but if we put money in our general fund, so then we have less restriction to use that money uh in our general fund to do things that is not mandated by the federal government because it's our loss. So we lost seventeen million dollar. If we put that in general fund, then later on we can do uh sewage and other stuff like that. But the other thing that I want to talk about, for example, uh mental health. If we want to do anything for mental health, com- combine those with the nonprofit. So give money to the nonprofit that does mental health in the seat of Houghton to help our residents, right? Because we did have a lot of people that were depressed because of COVID, uh because they lost lost loved ones. So I would combine the nonprofit with the mental health that is allowed by the federal government to provide some money to the nonprofit to give mental health. Okay, so that's my recommendation. Thank you.
Council member Patterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh you know, first, my recommendation is to um feel a little more organized in how we kind of figure out what to do with this with these funds. I think that it's probably in our in our best interest to allocate the full seventeen million uh that we can to reimbursing our losses. Uh I think pretty I think we'll all probably agree with that, which leaves about thirteen million dollars left to use in ways that are um outlined by the ARPA Act, let's say, to call it that way. So even with that said, my my suggestion is that um, you know, we begin immediately uh using these funds in ways that can really benefit the community. Uh the losses that the community has experienced have happened right now, you know, very recently. So we want to make sure we maximize our ability to uh to support uh, you know, our community members that experience loss, of course, our businesses, homeless population, all that. So I would suggest uh the seventeen million obviously be reimbursed to our general fund. At least thirteen million. So I would say that out of fifteen million that we're going to be receiving this month, we allocate thirteen of that to um invest into the community in ways that are outlined by ARPA. Um and put two million back in our general fund and then when we get the following fifteen million, just put that in our general fund. And then with that thirteen million dollars that we have that we can invest in the community under ARPA's guidelines, I think we should use a system like uh our previous city manager did to help us identify our priorities. Where we can identify, we can uh write down all of our different options, how those monies can be allocated. And then the council can vote on those options and and narrow it down to a top two, five, ten, fifty or whatever that we want to narrow it down to the top, whatever. Then we can go in and talk constructively about how much to allocate to each one of those those items that obviously that are the most popular among the five of us and move forward that way. So um that's my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. Um I'm gonna interject, I guess my turn, and then council member English, so then maybe you could give me feedback on what I say. Um so I I also agree, I know that everybody has their like items that they want to, you know, go ahead and uh recommend. And uh I really want to put weight on what our staff is coming up with. Because I would I I I really strongly feel that they're on the front lines, and we are too. But when it comes to the money aspect, the parts where we're like needing funding and you know, sometimes money is insufficient to meet certain infrastructure needs, certain uh assistance to the community. You know, uh I believe that like our staff um will uh sometimes know a bit more as to hey, you know, we're gonna help the homeless, but guess what? There's an agency that's not that's a fa- agency that's been created that their whole focus is on that. So we don't have to allocate to that. So we might say, let's allocate to it. But there might be already other services that we can uh focus here in the city of Hawthorne through our board of supervisor, through our assembly person. So um I guess we've used the word redundant, right, council member English? We don't want to have redundant uh efforts. Yeah, so uh everybody's said, every I agree with what everybody has said. But um I would like to give weight and an opportunity to for staff to identify. I want to see what the staff feels are our top needs as well. And then based on what they've heard from us, they could identify, okay, that's something we can uh do as well, but uh maybe this we don't have to because there's another agency that we can bring on board. We have a great uh new board uh supervisor supervisor, uh Ms. Holly Mitchell, that represents us. And I have to say, it's a hundred times better than the previous person we had. And she is very responsive. And if we ask her today to focus some resources here in the city of Hawthorne, I felt that we didn't have that before. I believe she was going to be very responsive and focus of different things here in the city of Hawthorne. Congresswoman uh Maxine Waters as well. Have we really tapped into her for resources of things that already exist and are already funded? I don't believe we have taken advantage of our relationship with her. So um I I I kind of I do like what council member Patterson said. Uh everybody writes down their top ten, see what, you know, just do a whole little like uh, you know, exercise and to, you know, what's the top five, and then we can kind of go from there. But I really would like for us, even before we do that, as part of that, Mr. City Manager, I would really like to see what you guys really feel are priorities. Not only infrastructure, not only like program needs, but things out in the community that we uh we have uh financial need for, okay?
Okay.
And you started thinking about how you could approach that, you know, at least from my off on my end.
Understood, and we started that. The ideas that uh we used in presentations was ideas from staff.
Yeah.
So this is a conversation we'll use as a as a foundation to come up with more priorities. And if council wants to direct me to come back with a list to to narrow down the parties that the council wants us to focus on, I'll take that direction now.
Yeah, I mean, if I have, we have something that's falling apart in the city and we just don't have any money, and we need to fix that, you need to tell us, man. And I do not want to dismiss anybody's request here as like, you know, not necessary, but yeah, that's what the whole priority making is. Council member English.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um thank you, Barry, for your time and for your expertise on this. That's important to us. Um Felice, your leadership is also important. Um I have a couple of questions with regards to the allocation. Uh will our allocation change?
No, no, unless unless uh unless somebody, unless uh some city would happen to um reject their funding allocation, it would go back in. Um but I don't anticipate that that probably going to happen.
So we're guaranteed a thirty five uh thirty million?
Correct.
Okay. Um and yes, I I I like um all the suggestions that were um discussed here tonight. And I think feedback from our departments is important. Each department needs to tell the council, more importantly, going through Vaughn, what their wish list is. And it includes infrastructure. It would include um things that bring our city to full operation again. That includes um our workforce. That will also include um any, you know, um monies that obviously needs to get back um or go back into our coffers. That's that's all good. Um there's a couple of programs that I know that folks in other communities are doing, specifically the city of Los Angeles, to encourage vaccinations, to encourage those uh individuals to get vaccinated and to continuously have uh testing. I believe that uh COVID nineteen is going to be something longevity that we have to forecast for. Anywhere I've said anytime, I said anywhere between two to five years. Um I know currently we're working with um Little Company of Mary to provide vaccinations, but the encouragement factor. So there's individuals, say for instance, that are being uh given incentives to consider a vaccination, right? There's folks that are being given, for instance, um in the city of Los Angeles, Council District Nine are giving their residents uh beats, music beats. If you want to get vaccinated, you're going to be given um, you know, some beats and they're like run about two hundred and fifty dollars, three hundred dollars. Um and it's just an encouragement. But um there's other, you know, there was lotteries, there was monies that were given away. There was trips that were given away. There were even scholarships that were given away, right? And so all of that is important, but um lots of great ideas. Um you do have on the list uh COVID nineteen response and prevention, including expenses for vaccinations, programs and sites. You have costs for providing COVID nineteen testing and monitoring. And we do that currently with our employees, sending those to get tested, right? We al- we also have uh what they have a acquisition and distribution of medical and protective supplies, which we have done with regards to masks. And during COVID nineteen, I assisted city manager Arnie with uh purchasing masks for employees here in the city of Hawthorne and to assure that each department had masks readily available. That's important. Um and they also had treatment of long-term symptoms for affected uh uh symptoms of uh or effects of COVID nineteen. And that's to assure that our workforce is fully healthy and are coming back to work. And so um being able to reach out to our employees that were uh infected is important. And there was also um, you know, discussion about our infrastructure, which included the ventilation systems and included um, you know, sewer systems, whatnot. But I want to go a little bit further. Um I know that I was contacted by the water company that services our city with regards to the rears that they have uh had to deal with with their customer base that were not able to pay for their water services. Um I also wanted to talk about Clean Power Alliance of Southern California, folks that weren't able to pay their light bills. And so are these also some of those monies that can be allocated for those types of 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 reimbursement or payment to folks that couldn't pay their utilities?
Yeah, you you could use some of this money for that too.
Yes, okay. Um you also had um the discussion on the small businesses. We've already made um some remarks on small businesses. And if you remember, council member Patterson, we talked about nonprofits. We talked about council member Montero, we talked about uh micro businesses, small businesses. We gave direction. Uh if you remember that, Vaughn, on how we wanted to assist the the businesses and the business community. We've waived fees so that businesses can have eateries and dining outside of their business. And we assisted in those efforts by giving wave of fees for a year worth. I don't know if that's something we could be reimbursed on through these dollars. But um all of this is important, including um um the nonprofits and assistance to mental health and homeless. Um I think first what we need to do is get an accounting for what's the need immediate here in our city, which includes the departments and their um feedback. And so I asked um Vaughn to do a um survey of sorts to each department head and ask them for their five, uh up to five um funding uh needs for the department. And then um I know restoring our city's workforce is important, and you know this, Mayor. We are shorthanded at this time, and so that's important that we make efforts to get our workforce back to work and to be fully operational in each department here in our city. That's important. Um to me and to the other council members, I know this because of all the uh constituents and businesses that have reached out to us with a number of concerns that they've had in their year of COVID and trying to recover. But um all of this is great information. Um I think ultimately you'll get some recommendations from the departments and from council. And then once we get all of that and we see what the real needs, not that all these needs are not needed and are are not real needs, I just, you know, it's going to be one of those things where we have to um you know, make sure that um we're funding each request uh as as we're able to. But at the same time, I do like the suggestion of putting um all seventeen million, if not that, back into our city coffers. The other thing, I had a question with Felice and Mr. Barry. At this junction, at this time, can we wait for the second round to reimburse our coffers? Are we in immediate need that you feel that we need to put these monies back into our coffers? And I think, Felice, that would be a question for you.
Uh no, we definitely could wait until that second round. It would still, we would still receive it within the this fiscal year uh June of twenty twenty-two. Um we should be able to receive those funds, uh if not early in July of of twenty twenty-two.
And um have have we come back with a plan for the small business? Because although this is, this is new to us, we've already provided direction for the small business and micro business grants. Is that from the similar, is this from the similar money or is it from other money that we had?
The programs that Kimberly is managing?
Correct.
Those are different funding.
Okay, so those funding sources, we have to deplete that until it's exhausted, right?
Correct.
And that included rental assistance, that is still going on, assistance for renters that can't make their rent.
Correct.
And I'd like a a report back on that, Vaughn, for our next council meeting. Where are we at? How many have we assisted? What's in the pipelines as far as in queue to to still assist? And then I want to know how much money do we still have remaining that we need to exhaust? And that includes uh a report on how we're going to work with the small business and the micro businesses on on uh applications for grants to assist those those entities.
Okay, uh council member Patterson and then council member Montero, do you guys want to speak still? You're muted? Can you unmute yourself?
Yeah, I was muted. Yeah, I do. Just a couple of quick things. I I agree with Councilwoman uh Ray's English that uh, you know, a good way to use that seventeen million dollar reimbursement of our loss is to invest in our workforce. So I definitely want to agree with that. And just want to speak to something that uh Premier Pro Tim said as far as investing in our small small businesses and understanding really what they need. I think that um the need to do that speaks to the fact that uh we do need an economic development director or manager like we've all agreed on in the past. I think that is somebody in that role, that would be something they'd be charged for doing, which is reaching out to the to the businesses in our city, understanding what their needs are, having a pulse on our business community. So just, you know, speaking to the fact that that is a position we do need to fill.
Council member Montero, thank you, sir.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, again, uh great discussion. Uh but I also want to reinforce because uh I think we're all in favor about, you know, improve our workforce capacity and be able to bring qualified candidate to the positions that are vacant. Uh so that is where we want to put this, most of this money into our general fund, you know, to recover our our losses. Uh so we could be able to do things that it's not specifically line up on the federal government uh li- list. But at the same time, I want to tell you guys that just keep in mind that this uh American Rescue Plan revenue was to make make sure that our city is back to normal, is back to do business, right? So we need to invest in our constituent in our business. So that is where we need to take care of our last fortune people that has been suffered for these past uh two years because of COVID, especially some some of the low income, the homeless, the people that live in our buildings, that those buildings need some uh repair urgent. So I will think about that. Uh I believe that we should think about only put fifty percent of that seventeen million dollar back to our general fund now by December, by June thirty-first. And then the other half in twenty twenty-two. So we can have at least, you know, uh eight eight million dollar ever uh to do some other uh programs like infrastructure, homeless, uh food giveaway, um mental health, all these stuff that we have talked about between all of us. All five of us have come up with great ideas. So what I want Vaughn and and Felice did, just to go back and listen to this tape because I don't want our ideas to be thrown away, okay? Because these ideas are very important. We the one who's going to be on the driver's seat, how we're going to spend this. Because these ideas are very important. We the one who's going to be on the driver's seat, how we're going to spend this money. So even it's important to go back to the, for the each department, but the programs has to met the guidelines, not just from the federal government, but from us as a city council, that we want to invest in our community, okay? So we have to do that. We have to show good faith that people did suffer all day and we are willing to help them out.
Okay, Vaughn, so we can move on to the rest of the agenda. Please go back and talk to Barry and Felice.
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
You guys can all come for.
Mr. Mayor, can I offer up one more suggestion before you move on? So almost every one of the councilmembers had talked about doing some outreach and understanding what the business community really needs and how they've been affected and all that. And so may I offer up a suggestion that we're doing in a couple of other places is to do a survey, do an an email survey. And so what we're doing is in a couple of other places is, is we tailor it really to your community, is do like about fifteen questions that are basically yes and no and multiple choice. And then you can find out how much, how they really have been impacted in terms of employees they've laid off, revenue losses, have they, have they used any other assistance? And what kind of things that they're really looking for? And I think that will help you then come back and understand what your business community, how they've been impacted and what they really need.
Barry, thank you so much for that recommendation. That's why we have you on board to do this type of stuff for us. Please assemble those questions, work with Vaughn, and then maybe just come back to us so that we could just go ahead and approve, we might want to add some stuff to some questions and I think, you know.
Mr. Mayor, quick, I forgot to mention something that Ms. English brought up about the Clean Power Alliance and and utility bills. Just keep in mind, the Clean Power Alliance actually have a lot of programs that is helping the low-income families and also the people that's not able to pay the utility, especially electric bills. And also keep in mind that the state of California have approved two billion dollar to help people on their utility bills. So just keep that in mind, that money is coming from the state and from the county to help people pay their back utility bills, okay?
Great, we could put that money into something else then. Mental health and homeless, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Felice. Thank you, Vaughn and staff for working together to give us something to start off with, okay?
Thanks, have a good night.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Madam, Madam Clerk, item number seventeen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number seventeen is the appointment of an interim human resources director. That would be Ms. Irma, and I hope I don't sabotage the last name, Yusufi. As the city's labor negotiator with respect to the Hawthorne Executive Group, H E G, the Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association, H M E A, and the Hawthorne Police Management and Supervisor Group, H P M S G, as well as the Hawthorne Officers Association, H P O A. It is recommended that the city council approve the appointment of the interim human resources director, Irma Yusufi, as labor negotiator with respect to the H E G, H M E A, H P M S G, and H P O A.
I make a motion. Second. Roll call vote, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rais English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Mayor, can I just make mention that I-
unanimously?
In unanimous, right?
Sorry about that, thank you.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just want to make sure that we still include our city manager as in that as well.
He's already been appointed, yes.
He is appointed.
Okay, thank you.
This is just in the absence of the previous-
I understand.
Yeah, human resources employee. Okay, Mr. Interim City Manager, your items, can you please read those into the record for us?
Absolutely. Mr. Mayor, I have items nineteen through twenty-two on my consent calendar. I think at this point, our city clerk will read the items into record.
No, that's fine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So item number nineteen is acceptance of appointment, I'm sorry, of approximately, acceptance of approximately two hundred and sixteen square feet easement for sidewalk purposes at one-two-four-one-zero zero Wilkie Avenue. Item twenty is progress payment number three in the amount of one hundred fifty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-five dollars due to the United Stormwater Inc. of Industry, California, for street inlet improvement project phase two, project number two-zero dash oh-seven. Item twenty-one is a progress payment number four in the amount of two hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-six cents to Cyellic Contractors Corporation, doing business as Shannon of Downey, California, for project number two-zero dash twelve for the Prairie Avenue Improvement Project Phase Two. Additionally, item number twenty-two is the selection of the L D M Associates, Inc., L D M as a consultant for the administration of the C D B G and home programs, as well as the construction management and other services that fall under the umbrella of the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD, federal funding from July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
I make a motion on all items?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
I have an item for discussion.
Thank you.
I'd like to pull item twenty-two for discussion. I'm fine with everything else.
Okay.
Just go ahead and discuss it because so we can just vote for it. If you have information, go ahead.
Felice, are you still there?
I'm sorry, can I finish the roll call on the other items, Mr. Mayor, prior to pulling item twenty-two?
Well.
We already have a motion and a second on the floor with item, with item twenty-two being pulled. What I can do is have the motion reflect for all items except for item twenty-two. Can you amend your motion to go through items eighteen, twenty-one?
I amend my motion with all items, with the exception of the item for discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Go ahead, ma'am. Roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Rais English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes. Okay, Councilmember-
Passes unanimously for again, items number eighteen through item number twenty-one.
Councilmember Rais English, go ahead and discuss your item, please.
Thank you. Is Felice there, Felice?
Yeah.
Hi, Felice. I'm just curious, Felice, for the year in which L D M and Associates would be administering the C D B G and Home Fund Programs, two thousand and one to twenty twenty-six, five years, is that the norm?
That's been the normal, that's been the normal amount of years for them, yes.
Not just for them, but for in the past, other, other-
Other contracts.
Yeah, other contracts that we have had in history. Has that been the norm, five years?
Yes, we did the same for our auditing firms. We do the same for, it just depends on the services that they're providing. It would be really difficult to go back and do an R F P every year. So we do do the five-year increments.
And then later on, you're going to be bringing to us the C D B G distribution, the home fund distributions, and what falls under the umbrellas of what's being paid through those monies, right?
Right, Kimberly will bring all of that to you, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Okay, so-
I'd like to move on item twenty-two.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
I'm sorry, Mayor Vargas, was that you seconded on that?
Yes, I seconded Councilmember English's, Rais English's motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rais English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Motion passes unanimously with a five-two zero vote.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, your consent calendar, please, sir.
Just thinking, Mr. Mayor, I have items number twenty-four through twenty-seven on my consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, can you please read those items into the record, please?
Thank you, yes. Item number twenty-four is to deny the claim of Mr. Peter Wang for age discrimination, disability discrimination, racial discrimination, harassment, false imprisonment, and defamation. Item number twenty-five is to deny the claim of Nancy J. Misca for personal injuries allegedly arising from a collision with the door of a city-owned vehicle. Item number twenty-six is approve the settlement and lawsuit brought by April Johnson Gabriel. Item twenty-seven is settlement of Ronnie Brown versus the city of Hawthorne, at all.
To the chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to pull item twenty-four, and I don't know how we're going to manage this because I reviewed the legal confidential, and I have a question with regards to item number twenty-four. And it's a sensitive question, so I don't know how we're going to manage.
Well.
With regards to have a discussion.
Let's, I'll make a motion on all the other items.
Excuse me, Mayor, is, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. Is item twenty-four the one on Lonny Brown? I'd like to pull that one.
Okay.
The settlement on Lonny Brown, I'd like to pull that one.
Okay, we're going to pull item number twenty-four and item number twenty-seven. I make a motion on item twenty-five and item twenty-six.
Second.
Roll call vote on those, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rais English?
Yes.
Council, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
So Anna, do you want me to bring back item number twenty-four and read that into the record for your discussion?
I have a recommendation with respect to the two items that the council members want to pull. These are litigation and potential litigation issues, so I prefer that we pull these two items and have a closed session to address your questions. If it's a, something that we can address in legal confidential, I can do that. I don't want to get into any type of litigation strategy or questions that may involve privacy. So if we want to pull that, then we could do closed sessions, especially in terms of approving settlement on Ronnie Brown versus the city of Hawthorne that's being requested to be discussed by Mayor Pro Tim Valentine. I think that will be more appropriate to do as a closed session item at the next meeting.
I agree.
Okay, so we still have, thank you. So I would, I would support that. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Can I make a motion to pull item twenty-four and twenty-seven for a closed session at the next council?
I think it's just instruction. You just did, we don't even have to vote on that, or do we have to?
You do, Mr. Mayor, you do have to vote because you're taking an action to move it to a different date and time.
Councilwoman English, make the motion, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we pull item twenty-four and twenty-seven for closed session discussion at our next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, I thought it was Councilmember Montero, but I'll give it to Mayor Pro Tim Valentine. Go ahead.
Thank you.
But we still have a vote that we need to take from twenty-five and twenty-six, right?
Correct. So the motion is to move item twenty-four and twenty-seven to the next city council meeting in closed session as an item. So motion was made by Councilmember English and seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Valentine. That is what the record will reflect. Without Mr. Mayor, may I proceed with roll call?
Roll call on that? I, no, we just had that. Okay, the roll call is on that specific motion?
Yes, correct.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Montero?
Yes.
Councilmember Patterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rais English?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Valentine?
Yes.
And Mayor Vargas.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved and unanimously will be moved.
Ms. City Clerk, didn't we have a motion in a second for twenty-five and twenty-six?
Yes, we already voted on it.
Yes, we did, sir. And we did do a roll call on that.
That was pretty quick.
You're welcome.
That was good. Hey, you're asking me to. Okay, guys, we're about to go vote in closed session. But we have a discussion.
We have a discussion, I think.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Patterson.
Yes, so the city attorney addressed my request in a legal confidential and satisfied, so I don't have anything to say.
Go ahead, Ms. City Clerk, just read it just for the record.
Right, so for the edification of the public item number twenty-eight.
No, twenty-nine.
I'm sorry, twenty-nine, is providing a status from the city attorney's office. And that request was made by Councilmember Patterson.
Councilmember Patterson, what's the status of your request?
It is the city attorney addressed my request in a legal confidential.
Thank you very much.
But he'll be providing ongoing updates via legal confidential, which satisfies my request.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Rais English has an item. Madam Clerk, can you read her item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So item number thirty is a request to support law enforcement agencies serving the L.A. Metro Bus and train lines and against defunding public safety. Again, this request was made by Councilmember Rais English.
Councilmember, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. This item was pulled at the previous meeting that I did not attend, and thank you for my excusal. The request was based off of the defunding of public trans, I should say, public safety officers, police officers from public transportation, which included metro and train lines. And so what I was asking for the city council was to support against the defunding of public safety dollars and send a letter if we can to the Department of L.A. Metro and those agencies reflecting that, that support.
Do you need any, any action from us?
Yeah, I just want, it could be just, you know, in support of sending a letter, you know, basically saying that the city does not support defunding public safety dollars that provide transportation needs to the community.
Who will this, who will this letter be directed to?
L.A. Metro.
L.A. Metro, and they've been getting pressure to defund?
Right.
Okay, I think this is, this rises to the level. So I'd be willing to support this.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Me, too. Yes, I support that.
Yeah. Councilmember Patterson?
I'll support it.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there you go.
Vaughn, if you could please help in just sending a letter simply to, that speaks to the language that's here on, on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification purposes, I apologize. I did not hear quite who, a motion and who's second.
Oh, we're just, we're just a simple-
On behalf of the city?
We're just doing a simple concurrence. Does this necessarily require a motion? Because the thing is, we're getting people to sign on. There's people who can, if we make a motion and a second, and somebody votes no, then, but the, the the positive, you know, the group that wins and supporting this, then everybody's name is going to be on there. So by making the roll call that I did, it just tells us who wants to sign on to this. This is just simple concurrent.
A letter of support.
Yeah, it was a unanimous directive, that's fine.
A directive, yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Will that be sufficient?
That's sufficient clarification. Thank you very much.
Okay, from your perspective in the city clerk's office. Okay, good. Thank you. All right, we have a, a, a closed item, agenda item, that we need to go into the back. We have the officials' reports and recommendations. I think we could go ahead and do that. So I'm going to step away real quick, but I'm going to call on the, I'm going to write it down. The city treasurer, city clerk, and then I'm going to ask Councilwoman English to go ahead and give hers, and then Councilmember Patterson in that order. I should be backing right up, okay? Do you guys capture that? So go ahead.
Can I go first?
Yes, sir.
All right.
City clerk, yeah, and then Patterson. Go ahead. Thank you, guys.
You guys just live in the California dream, I guess. I've been working, we had a lot of bonds that came due, so I just, you know, repurchased some CDs. I also been talking with the Bank of the West as we have had a lot of, you know, funds to take care of. And then also working on, you know, figuring out how much we can put into more long-term stuff as things go on. That's what I've been working on. And yeah, that's, that's a lot of money coming. It's like a gold rush for nonprofits, probably. This whole COVID thing is going to be something else. And then that's where I'll leave it. Thanks, all.
Thank you. Well, with that, just wanted to say I'm very grateful to be here with the city of Hawthorne. And currently, our city clerk is out of the country and on vacation. And so we're taking over the meetings for him and keeping or holding down the fort while he's away. But just some updates in terms of legislation. So we all know that there has been much taking place in terms of the elections here at the state of California. And one of those things is that we are slated to have a recall election against Governor Newsom happening in September. Additionally, there is a recall effort currently taking place at the county level to recall our district attorney, Mr. Gascon. And so having said some of those things, there is a lot of fluctuation in terms of looking at election cycles, looking at new election laws, particularly pertaining to the protection of voters. One of those being the extension of the one hundred feet to now possibly moving into two hundred feet for electioneering. So you may see that happening at the next statewide election taking place possibly in November, if not next year in twenty twenty-two. So again, there's just quite a bit happening in terms of the electoral process here in the state of California. I will continue to keep the city council and the public at large apprised of what's taking place because these will impact all of the voters. But more importantly, just making sure that the city is in unison with what is taking place and that we amend any codes that may need to be amended or ordinances to be able to- any codes that may need to be amended or ordinances to be able to comply with the state legislation coming up in the pipeline this year. Uh, with that, there is no further um, uh, comment or reports on my end for the city clerk's office.
Councilwoman English.
Thank you, and sorry for the, the disruption there. Um, let me just uh, first uh, thank everybody who has been helping uh, move our city along, especially um, seeing that we have our businesses being attended to and they're getting their licenses and things that they need to be fully operational and to be in compliance. That's important to me, um, I do want to um, request um, Mayor, um, to the chair, if we could um, get a recap from our interim city manager Von Norris on our customer ser- uh, customer service and efforts that we have in place, um, that we've been um, you know, be giving guidance on, and so can I ask um, you Mayor, if you could please um, uh, consider a closed session to discuss how those issues, those uh, efforts are are coming along with regards to our uh, customer service, um, what's the word I wanna say? Customer service efforts, yeah.
Okay, um, the, thank you, thank you, um, I I do support that, uh, I know we share the same concern when when it comes to that, the same desire to see that improve, I believe there have been improvements, but we need to hear from our uh, s- city manager. Uh, Mr. S- City Manager and in particular, Mr. City Attorney, uh, is can we have a closed session on an item of this uh, relevance?
I I don't think this can be a closed session, um, I I take it that it's more of a status on what's going on with um, customer service and and what we have are doing and what we're improving on. Um, I guess we won't be a closed session, but perhaps uh, through the city manager, I could find out more detail about exactly what's being sought. Or maybe we could get a clarification from uh, Councilmember uh, English tonight.
Okay, so let me, let me make a a clarification here. There's discussion that I feel that is um, sensitive in nature, that speaks to um, our personnel and our workforce, that speaks to various departments and agencies that has to be, in my opinion, discussed in a closed session so that we could openly and freely give better direction and provide more um, efforts that we feel that need to be discussed in that setting. So I don't want it to be um, something that is a public setting considering it's it's, it has to do with personnel.
So I I that's that's what I would like to see, that that is what I'm supporting, Mr. City Attorney, let us know if that's.
So, uh, to the chair, let me put that, maybe uh, we can put a closed session, talk about uh, uh, performing evaluation, etc.
All of that would be included, yes.
So what I can do is um, performance evaluation would have to be uh, as to the city manager that we can discuss in closed session with particular departments. Or I can do a legal confidential as to why that is, and I can explain that, and I, and I could provide an early legal confidential. Or we could do a closed session with performance evaluation with with respect to city manager who can in closed session discuss this.
So let let me, let 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 me, let me be a little more direct. Let let me be a little bit, let me be a little bit more direct.
We need to make this happen, guys, let's figure out, go ahead.
I'm ins- I'm instructing and giving a directive to the city attorney, the city manager, the H R department for a closed session meeting to discuss personnel matters.
Okay, look.
This will include, this will include direction from the council on the various items that we had discussed previously, and those items include performance, customer service evaluations, and includes departments and personnel. So this is a sensitive matter that should be discussed among the council and those departments that I named so that we could get an understanding and has what what has been occurring with regards to reporting out to the council on any matters or issues, and just to find how we're doing, so that's the directive that I am giving. I don't, I don't want a legal confidential. I want a closed session.
Understood, when would you like this closed session?
I would like it at the next council meeting.
Understood, thank you. Figure out the wording, no, realize that this is not a, we we wanna discuss this with you guys. So I'd like to see you, the city attorney, and the H R director, so that under this thing. If you need it worded in a specific way, whatever it is, unfortunately, I wouldn't wanna use your name because I don't wanna, it's not a, it's it's just an evaluation of the operations, that's it.
And and then, and then thank you, Mayor, I'd like to go, continue with my items that um, I'd like to, to um, discuss. The other issue is the cannabis program, I'd like to uh, get a report out on how we're doing with that based off of the 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 three entities that we have selected, where we're at in the process for that. Uh, has the background uh, search or background been done on those three entities and what's the response from those? If we could get that, um, and then I ultimately wanna see the program go forward, so I wanna know exactly um, all of that. Where are we, what are we, what we, where where do we have these consultants at, have they been evaluated, checked, vetted out? And then I'd like for us to discuss that at our next council meeting.
Thank you.
And then I just wanna just thank the departments in general, um, there's a lot that we've had to to do uh, in the last few months that speaks to, you know, parking issues. Uh, we have seen um, bulky items being picked up, we have seen tree trimming being done. We have seen our our um, infrastructures, including new new infrastructure on uh, the center mediums on Prairie Avenue. In particular, we've seen uh, uh, workers cleaning up parks. I've evaluated and seen all of this, and I just wanna say thank you, I wanna thank you for your efforts. And more importantly, because of this uh, care dollars, I want departments to start thinking now, providing us their five items per department. What is needed and what you feel is um, your wish list for the allocation of dollars, because I wanna hit departments first and get those uh, those um, dollars to you. But I also want those dollars to be spent in the community as Councilmember Montero and Patterson, Mayor has mentioned, and um, Councilmember Valentine with regards to businesses, so all of that, and uh, with that, I think I'm gonna end it, but thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you so much, uh, I think Councilmember Patterson, you were next right on the list.
So I wanna thank the community for turn- opportunity for tuning in, and I always appreciate your your input and feedback, whether it be public comment, uh, with the phone call, with the email, just always wanna continue to encourage you to do so, wanna thank staff for all your hard work. Uh, wanna echo uh, my council member colleague and ask that we pick back up where we left off in regards to selecting consultant for cannabis ordinance and or whatnot. And uh, what else, what else, what else, what else? Lastly, I wanna make sure that uh, when it comes to the the, was it ARPA? Is the acronym, uh, that we are investing in our community. Um, you know, we have a lot of businesses, a lot of families, a lot of individuals that have had a lot of hard times over the last year and some change, and we wanna make sure that we uh, we step in sooner rather than later to uh, support the recovery, so that's it.
All right, thank you so much, thank you, uh, Councilmember Montero.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, again, uh, thank you everyone for joining us, um, I echo the sentiment of Ms. English about the head departments. Uh, thank you for all your hard work, uh, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, the interim city attorney, Mr. Kim Robert, for your work and all the legal confidential has been outstanding, thank you for that. Uh, to Mr. Von Norris for your leadership, we know the cities continue to run perfectly. Um, I wanted just to tell everybody there, especially our staff, you know, I know the uh, your, all your departments has been on a, a very thin, you know, skeleton crew. Uh, we are working, doing diligent to this interim city manager to recruit all the staff that we need. And that is where uh, we need to invest in our workforce to improve all the service here in the city of Hawthorne, especially right here in City Hall, in all the departments. Uh, and also the money from the federal government to invest in our community, because our community needs to drive forward. Uh, and we need to give them the best service, the best living condition, the best roads, the best sewage, the best water. So we need to invest in all of those programs and make sure that their mental health are also addressed to. So I'm glad that we're gonna have the money to do it, and we we should do it uh, correctly. Um, I wanna say that thank you for the chief, uh, issue for the report about the fireworks. Um, yes, there was a lot of uh, fireworks for Fourth of July, so I I hope, I I hope that everybody was safe. And we didn't hear too much uh, incident in in Hawthorne, but there was a lot of, I know, illegal fireworks going on. And it's still going on ev- every night, uh, so uh, it definitely, uh, later, one of these days, we will definitely have to talk about fireworks in the city of Hawthorne. Um, I wanted to say thank you for the um, homeless task force, uh, we have a great meeting this afternoon. And for all the providers that show up uh, on that meeting, it shows that the people are cared and getting involved to help us out with the homeless issue, and and some of the churches uh, that show up, you know, the leader of some churches uh, like Curtis and Pastor Greg and Pastor um, Von, help me, I forgot, Delad.
Richardson.
Richardson, they show up on those meetings, so it's very important for us to collaborate with the faith-based organization and all the nonprofit that does uh, work with us. So we appreciate all all the efforts that we have. Um, I wanna say thank you to the Dodgers Foundation to bring the Dodger Day at the Holly Park uh, last Saturday, and it was a tremendous uh, event. Uh, Von can tell you that there was lines and lines of kids waiting for all the good stuff that the Dodger gave them, you know, it was it was a lot of giveaway. And I wanna say, uh, those people that thank you, those who show up for the farmer's market. Uh, but unfortunately, the farmer's market the first day was disappointed, and it was not like what I expected. But I promise you that on the thirty-first of this month, in July thirty-first, Saturday, the farmer's market is gonna be the, one of the best, okay? So don't, don't be discouraged, come back on the thirty-first and we're gonna do things better. Also, just keep in mind about the uh, flex alert, right? Because the Edison and the Clean Power Alliance have been sending notice about people for uh, for the power outage and the flex alert. Uh, try not to use your appliance, you know, uh, during the day, you know, try to do it most at nighttime, okay? Um, the other thing that I wanna give a directive to, through Von and through Alan Public Works uh, to see uh, if next, maybe to bring to the next meeting, uh, to create a sidewalk uh, handicap parking uh, right on the corner of a hundred forty-fifth, a hundred forty-first street and Hawthorne Boulevard. That corner is the Hawthorne School District, they just created a welcome center on that corner, that used to be the donor shop. And that the, the line right now is green, so they would like to see a handicap parking there so could have much better access to the welcome center. So I wanna give a directive for the Alan to bring it to the city council so we can vote on it on the next meeting, okay? And I think, Mr. Mayor, that's it, and good night, everyone, and I say good meeting. Uh, all very proud to all my councilor for the debate about how to use the federal dollar. And all of you was right to the point, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Montero, thank you for your uh, for your impact on the city council, thank you. Council, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Valentine, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, thank you, um, so I want to um, I want to reiterate the thank you to the H P D for the Fourth of July recap. Uh, specifically Lieutenant Amy Yoshida. Um, this city is one of the few that still permits the use of fireworks. I would like to hear from the citizens as to their opinion, as to whether we should continue to do this. Um, in the past, the desire of the citizens was to continue the use of fireworks. I would like to know if that is still the case, so I would like to hear from you. Uh, we did have a much lower incidence of fireworks complaints this year than in the past. So that's very encouraging, so this is considered a successful year. Um, because there were lower incidents and also because um, the H P D made notable seizures of illegal fireworks. So I'm happy about that, but again, I would like to hear from um, from the public as to whether you want to continue um, to permit firework usage in the city. I wanna talk a little bit about S B nine, Senate Bill Nut- Bill nine. If approved, it would effectively eliminate single-family zoning in wide swaths of California cities. The owners of parcels currently zoned for single-family use would be allowed by right to split their lots in two and then to have up to two residential units on each lot. This legislation would override locally approved zoning rules and permit denser development in residential neighborhoods. Therefore, a parcel currently zoned for only one family could soon have four families squeezed together. As you recall, this council passed a resolution opposing Senate Bill nine. Recently, I co-authored a letter to Governor Newsom opposing S B nine. The other authors were Mayor Drew Boils of El Segundo and Councilmember Christian Horvath of Redondo Beach. The letter of opposition was endorsed by a hundred and twenty elected officials from forty-eight jurisdictions. On July ninth, it was published in the L.A. Times as an op-ed. I urge the public to read it and send your own letter to the governor in opposition. This is a very bad bill for local control in our cities. As this, the status of it right now is that it has passed the Senate and is in the Assembly Appropriations Committee. Um, they did, they don't expect any action on it until mid-August. So again, I urge you to uh, to to let your voices be heard on that very negative bill for this, uh, for the, for the, for residential local control. And I think that's all I have, I wanna thank the staff for all of your help, for all of your work, your hard work. To interim city manager Von Norris, to interim city attorney, uh, Robert Kim, and to all of those of you who have worked so hard on the things that we ask you to do. Uh, thank, thanks to my council colleagues for all of their suggestions on ARPA. And hopefully, we can really uh, have a, have a, have a very uh, a a very excellent um, way of distribution, the distributing these funds for the for the mutual benefit of all the residents of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is that a, is that a hand that you accidentally hit, Councilmember Reyes English, or is that?
I wanna ask, uh, Mayor, if I could have one go back, I totally forgot about. Um, if I could ask for the next council, I, uh, next council meeting to include an agenda items to discuss the fireworks and its potential, um, um, you know, um, future. So, I'd like to have the chief of police to give us a debriefing, but ultimately, the item to be included on the agenda uh, for discussion and debate on whether or not we move forward with fireworks for next year or in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that's gonna be a lively debate. Are there any other go-backs, because I'm gonna go straight into the closed session after my comments.
I I do have one go-back, Mayor, um, I'd like to, I'd like to um, give a directive to interim city manager Von Norris to uh, take a look at the resolution we passed for um, employee appreciation appreciation day and see if we can set a date so that we can actually have Employee Appreciation Day. I think the employees could use a morale booster, and I think that we we've already approved it, we just have to set a date each year, and I think each year it should be on the same date or on or around the same date. But um, we didn't have it last year, and I think we should um, we should have it this year.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Patterson or Councilmember Montero, any go-backs?
Just on on that note of Ms. Valentine, and um, and then I believe last year the connective credit union uh, wanted to do something special with the staff, they wanted, they actually, they wanted to, they did wanna sponsor the uh, Staff Appreciation Day, so maybe we could reach out to them.
Thank you, guys, thank you, everybody. Okay, so um, I would like to congratulate city staff, Parks and Recreation staff, uh, you, Von Norris, uh, for the improvements at Ramona Park and at the Holly Park, uh, Park, so uh, uh, it's it's looking forward, I gave, I gave you some feedback on some of the things, you know, for Ramona, especially the basketball courts that are all uh, the concrete is all, was all jaggedy, and now you've uh, cleaned it up, apparently. Uh, one of the residents knew I was very vocal about that, and so he invited me to go play basketball tomorrow against him like around two, so anybody wants to show up around two, um, I'll I'll show you guys my three-point shooting skills, okay? against him like around two. So anybody wants to show up around two, um, I'll I'll show you guys my three-point shooting skills. Okay?
Oh, and and Mr. Mayor, tell the people over there at the Ramona Park that the horseshoe uh, is actually the people, uh, my members from the Hawthorne Muslaj and from the Ramona area, they go there every Wednesday afternoon and play dog. Or not dog, uh, play horseshoe, okay?
Good, good. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. And I and I believe Councilmember Montero challenged me, I think, in basketball or what was it? Yeah, yeah.
Uh-huh. I'll I'll challenge you in soccer.
I would gladly play you in soccer, my friend. Oh, I love that. Okay. So, um, congratulations, Vaughn. Uh, great work. I know right now you're in the interim city manager's position, but you ca- you come from the Parks and Rec Department. Thank you to your staff and all the people here at City Hall, uh, who laid that out, previous administrators here, uh, Arnie and everybody else who assembled the money for all that. Thank you. Um, one of the things that, uh, I wanted to address is that, uh, there's a lot of things happening in Cuba right now.
Oh, yeah.
In Cuba. And I'm going to speak openly on my opinion. This is my opinion, and this is my platform. And we have a very significant, uh, sizable Cuban-American community here in the city of Hawthorne. We have Jose Martí Club. So we, you know, they've made a great positive impact on our community. And I would like to extend my support to the Cuban people, the people, not the government. The government has been the problem. Socialism has destroyed Cuba to the point where
ominous.
Like socialist, communist, et cetera. There's a lot of crossover, you know, potatoes, potatoes. They don't even know what they are. So want to make sure that everybody knows that right now there's a movement right now where people are upset. They can't get the food. They can't get the medicine to fight COVID, and they're frustrated. They're tired. So that has to change. I personally extend my support. And I invite everybody out in the community to listen to what's going on. And if interested, if you're so moved, please support our Cuban community, uh, and the people over there. If the avenues open up to donate to relief efforts and to press our, uh, our government right now to intervene and to help start that change because they deserve to be free. They don't deserve to get one sack of rice, once, one bag of rice and one bag of beans and maybe a chicken a month to be able to live. Okay? It's awful. Okay, so, um, I extend my support and, uh, I hope you guys all pay attention to that. Okay? Okay, then, um, one of the things that I I wanted to express and something that I happened and I observed over, uh, within the last week on a weekend, uh, was that, uh, we have a homeless situation here in the city of Hawthorne. I have received several, uh, two or three complaints with pictures from our residents on our, the homeless population here pulling, I hate to say it, I'm going to be, there's no reason why not to be pulling, you know, taking off their clothes, washing themselves in public in plain sight of children. Uh, going to the bathroom in front of children, in front of families. And, uh, doing what they're doing, going to the bathroom and creating a mess. With, you're right, there is a balance as to how we can help them. Sometimes they're mentally ill, but at the same time, uh, I cannot allow our residents, the children and the families to need to have to see this. No matter how sensitive and no matter how helpful we need to be to to this population. I was driving on, uh, Saturday morning, I went to like around seven o'clock, uh, in the morning, and I went to McDonald's to get like my breakfast sandwich or whatever. And I was, I was with my girlfriend. And so we drove by and we saw somebody just literally just up against the wall doing what they're doing. And I don't want to tell you guys more. So we, I saw it for myself. I've got in the pictures. So we need to, we need to, uh, help. But we also need to enforce the laws and protect our res- our residents from having to see that, having to, uh, experience that and see, uh, you know, people doing that in front of their children. There has to, there is a balanced approach, and I just, uh, I'll err on protecting our children from seeing things like that. So, uh, let's try to find solutions, see if we can, uh, spend some of that money to be able to address the mental health needs of this population. Because unfortunately, it, the the mental health problem has, you know, really caused a lot of damage in their minds. Okay?
So we have to take them out the street.
And yes, exactly. And that's, that's where this money comes into play. So
We have to have programs to take them out the street.
Exactly. We don't need to see this type of stuff. We need to protect them and just get them to help the medicine, whatever they need to do to be able to feel better and think straight.
And what, we're going to bring you a plan.
I I like that. Thank you for your comments on that.
Yeah.
We're going to bring you a plan. We have a plan.
So, uh, we have a closed session item. Uh, Ms. City Clerk, can you read that item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, with your permission. Item number thirty-two is in fact a closed session. It is conference with labor negotiators uh, pursuant, uh, pursuant to, uh, Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six A of the California Government Code. At this time, the name of the labor negotiator is our interim city manager, Mr. Vaughn Norris, and our interim human resource director, Irma Yusef-Yusefi. Uh, and this is regarding the Hawthorne Executive Group or H E G, the Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association, H E M E A, I'm sorry, H M E A, the Hawthorne Police Management and Supervisory Group, H P M S G, and the Hawthorne Police Officers Association, H P O A. There is nothing further in closed session.
Okay. Um, so were there any messages from the community?
None were received, uh, either in written format or, uh, anyone or any speaker requesting to orally speak at tonight's meeting.
And and Mr. Mayor, uh, we're requesting that we separate the closed session for Hawthorne Executive Group due to the potential conflict of interest for Mr. Vaughn Norris and myself under our current agreement.
Okay, uh, let's just do all the other ones. Uh, with you included, okay? Let's just do those first, and then we do the H E G one at the end.
Thank you.
Just so we can get the heavy stuff out of the way. You guys are pretty easy, so. I'm just kidding. All right. So I'm going to recess the city council meeting to meeting closed session uh, pursuant to the agenda. The city council meeting is in recess.
Five, four, three, two, one, now dry.
Wash your hands for twenty seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for twenty plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, president of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's forty million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the one in eight Californians, including the one in five children who are food insecure. At twenty-three million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. Thirteen eighty-three requires new rules and regulations to achieve a fifty percent reduction in organic waste disposal by twenty twenty, a seventy-five percent reduction by twenty twenty-five, and actions to make sure twenty percent of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January first, twenty twenty-two. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in twenty sixteen. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
Thirteen eighty-three will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements or hauler permit.
Some of this is new, and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January one, twenty twenty-two.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for thirteen eighty-three implementation.
The city of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code twelve dot zero four dot zero three one pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen.
The City of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
Thank you.
As the nation's doctor, I often get asked, "What should I do if I think I might have coronavirus?"
People who are sick should stay home. You don't go to an emergency room, you don't go to a clinic. Get on the phone and you ask for advice and instructions from your physician.
We don't want you to go into the ER or the doctor's office without talking to them first because you might spread coronavirus to someone else. Please visit coronavirus.gov for more information.
New York is the canary in the coal mine. What happens to New York is going to wind up happening in your city and in your community. We are going to fight every way we can to save every life that we can. We are all first responders. Your actions can either save or endanger a life. Job one has to be save lives. That has to be the priority.
You have to stay home.
Not just to protect yourself, but to protect others.
Stay at least six feet away from other people. Two, arm length. Just because you're at home...
Doesn't mean that we can't be alone together.
Together.
Wash your hands for 20 seconds, just like Elmo.
How do you protect yourself and others from coronavirus?
Avoid touching your eyes, your nose, and your mouth.
Wash your hands often with soap and water for 20-plus seconds.
Clean and disinfect surfaces and objects.
Together, we can help slow the spread.
When you're interacting with others who are not members of your household in both public and private spaces, wear a cloth face covering. Before you put it on, wash your hands or sanitize them. Before you take it off, make sure your hands are clean. And after you take it off, wash your hands again. Wash your cloth face coverings often. Wear a clean one every single day. Learn more at publichealth.lacounty.gov.
Hello, I'm Gloria Gray, President of the West Basin Municipal Water District Board, where we take pride in delivering safe, reliable water to our communities.
According to the CDC, coronavirus is not transmitted through water.
West Basin works diligently to protect the quality and reliability of the water supply. On behalf of the West Basin Board of Directors, we hope you and your family are staying safe and healthy.
For more information, visit westbasin.org.
Even though California is flourishing in many ways, we are also facing greater challenges than ever due to climate change. Cyclical droughts, intense fire seasons, and pollution endangers human health and the environment. In California, we're doing something about it.
Governor Jerry Brown today signed a bill regulating emissions from landfills to fight climate change.
The organics law calls on the state's 40 million residents, its businesses, and every level of government to combat climate change by getting food, green waste, and other organics out of our landfills and get more good food to the 1 in 8 Californians, including the 1 in 5 children who are food insecure. At 23 million tons, organics are by far the largest material type landfill in California each year. Fortunately, yard, food, and other organic waste can be recycled into compost and renewable natural gas. 1383 requires new rules and regulations to achieve a 50% reduction in organic waste disposal by 2020, a 75% reduction by 2025, and actions to make sure 20% of currently disposed edible food is redirected to Californians in need. Enforcement begins once the law takes effect on January 1, 2022. Achieving these targets demands a new approach and substantial new investments to restructure the waste management system of the world's fifth-largest economy. CalRecycle began rulemaking immediately after the law's passage in 2016. Jurisdictions should start planning now to meet the law's requirements.
1383 will affect every resident and every business in the state of California. CalRecycle is here to help local governments understand and implement this new program.
Start planning now to connect large food waste generators with your local food recovery organizations to help feed hungry people where you live. Start planning now to expand organic waste collection to all homes and businesses in your area and increase your local capacity to recycle this material. Start planning now for rate changes to fund these efforts, new ordinances for mandatory recycling enforcement, and changes to existing franchise agreements for hauler permits.
Some of this is new and some of it requires more of what you've already been doing. But all of it requires planning now to make sure programs are in place by January 1, 2022.
Recycling organic waste is an essential part of the state's strategy and one of the most cost-effective ways every Californian can reduce their own greenhouse gas footprint. Together, California will create a more sustainable future, combat climate change, feed more Californians, and improve the health of our people and our planet. CalRecycle is your committed partner in this effort. Get in touch with us to learn more about available support and resources to help you succeed. And talk to your staff about strategies for the next steps for 1383 implementation.
...
And Mr. Interim City Attorney, go ahead.
The labor negotiators were instructed.
Okay. Is there anything further from staff or from council? If not, this meeting is adjourned.
Good night. Thank you, guys. Bye-bye. Good job. Thank you.
Good night.
Have fun. I love you.
Thank you. I am. Now I can continue my vacation.